Morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, November seventeenth. It's nine AM. I'd like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And after the meeting, or I'm sorry, after the pledge, I'd like for everybody to remain standing as I want to have a moment of silence for Corporal Blake Reynolds, who lost his life last week in the line of duty. And after that, then Chief Deputy Stanley is gonna come up and say a few words. So let's open the meeting with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Stanley.
Return your mic there.
Jeff Stanley, Chief Deputy Sheriff's Office. First off, I just want to say thank you for everything that you have done over this past week. It means so much to me, to the deputies. Sheriff Skinner. You know, Commissioner Henry and Commissioner Brand coming out that morning to the hospital meant so much to the deputies and the deputies' family that was there. You know, they saw the outpour of the community. They saw the outpour of the the workers here at the county, and they greatly appreciate it. There's a lot going on this week. There's a lot of planning going on, and you have given us every opportunity and everything that we have needed and everything that we've asked for. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself and on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and on behalf of the Reynolds family. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna have a public hearing for petitions to vacate the bridges and roads. I'm sorry. Let's do a rule call. My apologies.
Commissioner Reagan.
Present.
Commissioner Brand.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
I'm here.
Rick.
Here.
Mr. Rube.
Okay, now let's do the public hearing for petitions to vacate the bridges.
This is a public hearing to do two vacations. One, a bridge on approximately fourteen hundred or eleven hundred block, I think, of East Wade Street, behind the sanitary district new offices on Martin Luther King. Another one is a bridge in about seventeen hundred feet, I think it is, of roadway of County Road 200 West, north of County Road 400 South, from basically the creek north to the dead end, which dead ends into the bypass. We did send notice out. There's been publication. I did receive one phone call last week from the family of the property owner on 200 West objecting to the vacation of the road. They intend on selling the property, which there are two large parcels of farm ground, tillable farm ground, that are on either side of 200 West, north of the creek. And since they're going to sell that property, they don't know if they're gonna be able to have one buyer or two buyers. It's entirely possible they could have multiple buyers up there because they're dividing up the property into five different parcels, like there was. At one point, there were discussions about one buyer, but that fell through. So they would like to, for you to hold off on selling it. But I think some of the family members here to talk about it. So I said I would relate that to you.
Is there anyone here to speak in reference to this? Could you please state your name and address, please?
Yep. Good morning, Commissioners. Mara Hofflet of Ferveran, 400 South Walnut Street here in Muncie. I represent the Miller family. As was referenced, the patriarch passed away recently, and the family's been trying to decide what to do with the farmland. It is a significant number of acreage, around two hundred and eighteen total acres on five different tracks. Since a single buyer deal did not go through, the plan is to put the tracks up for auction in January. So we would ask that this at least be tabled till March or April so we would have a chance to sell that off, see if there's gonna be multiple ownership, what kind of private interests would be at play so that you can make an informed decision at that time. I would state, just for your knowledge, that Kathy Van Ashton's worked with an engineer and did review that bridge. And that engineer said it was in good condition with no current weight restrictions. So there's no immediate need to repair it.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Joshua Daring. Live on 4275 Newton Road, Indianapolis, Indiana. I just came back from kind of partial business trip. So I got this letter in the mail on Saturday. So I didn't get a chance to call about it. So they said that the land was, or the bridge that they would like to vacate is kinda in between 2400 Block Market Street, Muncie, Indiana, and a 900 East Centennial Avenue of Muncie, Indiana. I don't even know what kind of bridge this is. Is this the road? I know there's like an extended road, about a hundred feet, that is on the land that I own. I'm not sure if that's what they're trying to vacate there.
Do you know where the Muncie Sanitary District is on?
I do.
It's directly behind the Muncie Sanitary District.
Okay.
Just north of the church on Centennial.
Okay, so it's not on the, on the land of 2400 at all?
I would have to look at a map. So this bridge was believed to have been vacated previously. And when we looked into it, it had not been vacated. When the sanitary district built their new facility out there on Broadway, we believed it was vacated at that time. For whatever reason, it didn't get vacated, and we're trying to follow through.
Okay.
But I don't believe it's in the area that you're looking. But do you have a map of?
I'm trying to get it to come up.
It says here that the bridge property adjacent to the portion of the street sought to be vacated are owned by the following. JCD Enterprise, Inc., 2400 Block, North Market Street, Muncie, Indiana. That was a, so is it like adjacent or is it within?
JDC owns the north side of the bridge. Muncie Sanitary District owns the property on the south side of the bridge.
Yes.
It looked like it's East Wade Avenue. And East Wade is about a block, block and a half long in that area. Market Street goes up to East Wade, and then Wade goes over. But it looks like Wade dead ends, and there may be a gravel road or dirt road that goes back in the property towards Granville.
Okay, okay. And again, is that road, are they trying to vacate that road that leads to Norfolk Railroad?
Not the road, no.
Not the road.
Not, just the bridge.
Just the bridge.
The county controls by statute all the bridges in the city and the county.
Okay.
The road would have to be vacated through the city council if they want to do that. But the county just wants to vacate this bridge. So it's not put on its bridge inventory and has to maintain it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I think that bridge also was in at least good condition.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak about this?
Go ahead. Yeah, I would like to add that looking at the bridge inventory, if anybody's bored, they're welcome to look through this. That Bridge Five, is it 507? Yep.
Yes, 507.
That's on Wade. It's on our Category One of inventories to be, to be addressed. And the other bridge, 190, is under Category Two. So there are three categories, actually five categories. But the Bridge 190 is in the second most critical group, and the Bridge 509 is in the most critical group.
John, I hadn't asked that when we vacate these, would we take them down as we vacate them?
No, we just stop using them. The county doesn't own the fee simple title, which is the title to the ground. All we have, according to Indiana Title, is we have a right of way use, which is like most county roads. We have the right to use it. As long as we use it as a road, the county uses the road, then we have the use to it. But once we stop using it, then it reverts back to the adjacent property owners. So you can keep the bridge up. That's not probably, you're just not required to maintain it.
So the bridge on Wade hasn't been used in probably a decade, maybe more. The bridge out on 200 West hasn't been used in many decades, only for access for farming. And we've done no maintenance to that bridge or the road on 200 West.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next is the Board Appointments, Board of Health.
We still have an opening there. They're, the Board of Health, the board itself, is supposed to make a recommendation to the city executive. They're looking for a Democrat with some very specific qualifications. And we still haven't received any recommendations from the Board of the Board of Health. Received an email since our last meeting from citizens, in a way, accusing us of intentionally not filling this board seat, saying that it almost seemed intentional. I made a very nice response and said, I'm not sure why Democrats with those qualifications don't volunteer, but they're not. And we're still looking for a Democrat with those specific qualifications to go to the Board of Health and say that they're interested in serving on the Board of Health.
Civic Center?
Still looking for a Republican there with some sort of legal background. An attorney would be ideal. But we haven't had anybody come forward in a couple of months now. So the Civic Center Authority Board has said, hey, if we could just get somebody with legal background, that would be ideal. So still no one there for that.
Fair Board, Commissioner Reagan.
We did fill the two that we had open. And it's the time of year where the Fair Board members that would like to continue should send us a letter. And any new persons that would like to serve on the Fair Board, your qualifications. And I think we'll probably have about six or seven that are up this year. And it's a busy time when we do fill all these boards. But we do want the public to step forward. We'd like to have people show up. And that's a good way to get started in government, learn more, help the community.
I did receive a phone call this weekend from the current president, President Dan White, who is basically worried that they elect officers next week, or this week, I guess. Is that correct, Sheriff?
They'll have to postpone that, yes.
And he is worried that they will not get a president.
Yes, this is one thing that when anybody serves on any board, it's a good idea to put someone in on the board and then work them up to officers. And we just aren't seeing this where people want to step up and be an officer. So this is our problem now.
Okay, thank you. Table business, we have the power lease.
I think we're needing to leave that on. Is that correct, John?
Yes, I've had some communications, still negotiating. And I think that at least Commissioner Brand has received some inquiries from other companies that may want to lease that space. So we may have, they may have some competition.
Yeah, I have received a couple of inquiries from other companies that lease cell towers, saying that they would like to take a look at that. I sent responses back, but I haven't heard any further responses.
Okay, so we'll leave that table.
Yes.
We have the Commissioner meeting minutes from October twentieth.
Yeah, I sent some corrections. I believe they've been corrected. I would make a motion to remove those from the table.
Second.
We have a motion to remove those from the table and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Entertained a motion for approval with corrections?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those minutes and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes for the Commissioners' meeting November third. Any comments or questions or corrections?
I also sent corrections on those. I believe they've been made. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those minutes and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have I-R-A-X update.
Good morning. I'm Kimber Reynolds with the Past Recovery Services. And I wanted to provide an update regarding the I-R-A-X program. As of October thirty first, 2025, we have done two thousand three hundred and fifty-five brief engagements, meaning we have met ongoing two thousand three hundred and fifty-five times with different individuals. Some may be multiple times. We have released sixty-two short-term treatment, one thirty-six to long-term treatment, and fifty-five individuals to recovery residents. And transitioned a hundred and thirty-five successfully to Indiana Department of Corrections. Fifty-eight RAP, I'm sorry, two hundred and four RAP participants, which is a wellness recovery program. And then five hundred and eighteen to the Matrix Participation, which is an evidence-based program for those with mental health and substance use issues. And then we have also worked hand in hand with the individuals to get insurance navigation, whether insurance stopped and then reopened when they leave the incarceration of four hundred and eighty-eight individuals. So we've had some great success regarding that. And of course, that could not have been done without the support of our local sheriff and the jail. They have been fantastic to work with. And we, it could not have been done without them. We also are in a partnership with the local Prevention Council, where we are located directly in the probation office two days a week. And we have received, and that just started in August. And right, as of right now, we have a hundred and thirty-six individuals that have been referred directly to our peer recovery coach with thirty active individuals seeking recovery services through that program. I believe you guys received the UMass Medical School outcome. I think they sent that based on the, since we were a pilot site, Delaware County was one of the pilot sites. And they have said that as of September 2025, they did a study on fatal drug overdoses and the outcomes of that. And based on the five pilot sites, there has been a decrease in the number of overdoses resulting in deaths in all five pilot sites, based on other communities across the state of Indiana. There has been seventy-seven percent reduction in jail compared to other counties where there's only a forty percent reduction. And, excuse me, and then emergency department visits, an eighty-five percent reduction and sixty percent reduction in non-I-R-A-X sites. So that is huge across the communities with that impact. And then emergency medical services, where people are going out to the homes or into the community. I-R-A-X pilot sites had a forty-three percent reduction of that, where non-I-R-A-X sites only had a thirty-six percent reduction. So it shows that the I-R-A-X sites and the collaborations across the communities are making a difference.
That pilot site report you're referring to, I don't believe I've seen that. Can you get a copy of that to Jenna, please?
Yes, I can. I actually have three hard copies, but would you?
That'd be great. Electronically be good, too.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I do have one more question. She gets back up to the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question when you return the mic. So I see the success of this program, and I think it's important for our community, and I'd like to see it continue. The history of the funding of this was it was originally supposed to be a free program. Then the county gave twenty-five thousand. This year, they give fifty thousand. Will there be an increased ask for next year?
According to what I understand, there that the county has already committed some dollars to that. And I, out of the Edit Fund for seventy-five, we will be changing as of January one to a fee-for-service model. We do not know the details of that yet. We have a meeting at the state on Wednesday. And those dollars will be coming out of Recovery Works. And it'll be based on the number of times we work with an individual weekly. So there'll be certain touch points that we will have to do on a weekly basis to be able to receive those dollars. So we'll have to continue basically what we're doing to be funded through the state.
Understand. When you get a copy of that fee-for-service model, will you make sure our legal counsel gets a copy of it? I believe there are different rules of engagement and reporting under a fee-for-service model than there is a general agreement.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work you guys do.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Next, we have Steve Wright, Sheriff's Department Gun Range.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here with hopefully one of the easiest decisions you guys are gonna have today, I hope. In 2018, 2019, I was tasked with trying to see the completion of our gun range located out there just north of the county's Highway Department off State Road 32. It didn't take me long to realize the enormity of the project and the scope of it was gonna be virtually impossible for us to accomplish without some sort of funding. You know, however, at the time, we were, already had a footprint in place, and it'd already been a good base established for us. The goal was to create an environment where we could train and operate in a three hundred and sixty-degree environment where we've got burns up three hundred and sixty degrees where we can get vehicles in and out of the facility and basically be able to train and operate in a real-world environment. We, at the time, we were getting equipment and dirt just on a volunteer basis and just basically borrowing and asking for donations wherever we could. Currently, as far as my understanding is, you know, where we're currently operating at, it is virtually with no out-of-pocket expenses to the Delaware County taxpayers. We do have a functional range at this, range at this point in time. However, it is far below what the industry standards recommend. Lieutenant Payne's gonna elaborate a little bit more on that. In 2019, I reached out to a local contractor and requested some pricing to what it would take to finish this. And I was presented with a quote, a total quote of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The dirt work alone was gonna be just a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was utilizing dirt that was gonna be taken off-site in what we call a borrow pit. I have some of those models I presented to Jenna that we can bring up on the screen if you guys would like to see them. What I'm here today to ask you guys is, I have reached out to the Operators Union in Chesterfield, and I've been in close contact with them. And they are willing to provide the operators through their apprentices and utilize it as a training facility. Gonna use their operators, their equipment, their fuel to come out and take the dirt from what we're calling the borrow pit and actually get our range of burns up to industry standards. They're willing to do this for virtually, with no out-of-pocket expense from us. The only thing that they've initially asked that they, they might possibly need help with, and that's the transportation of their large excavator from the Chesterfield site out to our facility on 32. The current elevations we've got, I think, we're about ten feet below, I believe, what industry standards are. And that's, that's basically at our back burn. So we still do not have a full completion of our right or left burns and virtually minimal at our rear. So I think, you know, I think what they're offering is a tremendous, you know, opportunity for us, for the taxpayers of Delaware County, to get our range facility up and operating to a safe standard. I'm gonna let Lieutenant Danny Payne speak to you guys just briefly about some of the training hours and how much it's being utilized.
Hi, Andrew Payne. I'm a lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office. I run our Training Division. Currently, our range is used more than a hundred and eighty times a year. We spoke recently about getting range fees in place, and we sincerely appreciate that. So far, everyone that I've talked to, as far as outside agencies, think that the fees are extremely reasonable. And so we appreciate your guys' cooperation with that. One of the greatest liabilities that a county and a law enforcement agency faces is failure to train lawsuit. They're averaging right now in 2023, the last year I have data for, about two point two million dollars is the average payout for a failure-to-train lawsuit. Currently, our range is functional mainly because of diligence of our instructors and setting up safe courses of fire. But it, with erosion, with settling, our range is below, at this point, what the NRA recommends for a dynamic training range. A static range would be standing on a simple line and shooting straight ahead. But because the world is a, you know, three hundred and sixty-degree environment, you know, we really need a range that meets those specifications. The NRA recommends at least burns of twenty-five feet for dynamic training. Currently, some, what's our backstop? Probably at about fifteen. Currently, our backstop's at about fifteen feet with our side burns being below that. This, this project, if you approve it going forward, would not only make a better training facility, but would also make one with significantly less liability for the county itself.
John, do we need some kind of agreement going up for this?
An agreement with the Sheriff's Office to do that or constructed?
No, an agreement with the Operators Union.
Oh, for the, to move the excavator out there?
Yeah, yeah.
That probably wouldn't hurt to have that agreement.
I think, let's, Commissioner Rand, since you're over highway, why don't you check to see if we can transport that excavator with the equipment that we currently have?
We cannot. We cannot. And the company that did the quote for these guys in 2019 also don't have a low boy heavy enough. But there are a couple of companies here locally. Banyi Excavating and Construction is one that comes to mind. And maybe we can get some sort of in-kind donation to transport that. But I know that Mr. Wright has done some additional research.
Randy Radigan from the Operators Union was also reaching out to EMB Paving to see if they couldn't possibly help us with that request. And he was just waiting on a, you know, on an answer back from them.
Right, okay.
Originally, we were hoping to maybe start this in the fall. He has since reached out to me and said, with their new construction project they've got going on at their facility, he said springtime is probably gonna be a better timeline for them. So we've still got a little bit of time on that. But I believe we were still looking at getting that donated through one of the local companies.
And we're looking at using the dump trucks from the county highway department to do this, which we're allowed to do to service a county-owned facility.
Thanks, great opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you guys. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate you guys doing your diligence to find this and that it's not a burden on the taxpayers. And I think it's a great opportunity for the skilled trade, training, which I'm a big fan of the skilled trades. But since this is in the spring, we've got a little bit of time, I think, to work through this. There's a borrow area that you guys have highlighted as proposed.
Yes, sir.
I spoke to the contract farmers, Wade Wright, last week, and briefed him on this, told him what was going on. He said he would take a look, and I committed to him that we would have a follow-up conversation with him before we dig a hole. He said maybe there's a better place, and he wanted to make sure that we didn't violate any tiles that might not necessarily be county tiles, but were tiles that were put in for the, for the drainage of this. But I'm in support.
Okay. There is one further request that will be, possibly be following with this, and that is gonna be some sort of seeding option. Okay, 'cause once we get the dirt work done, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to put some sort of ground covering down, okay, that's gonna minimize the erosion to where the, the rain and everything else is not just gonna constantly settle back down on us. I do not have those numbers in front of me at this point in time, but I'm reaching out to some other local places to try and get some options for some high-slope seeding and, you know, but there will be a little bit of expense that I'll be asking for when we get to that point, point in time. I just don't have those numbers with me today.
Very good. Understand. I'd entertain a motion to approve this work out at the gun range.
I make a motion to approve, understanding that our legal counsel needs to take a look at some sort of, if an agreement's necessary with the Operators Union to properly protect them and the county.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggin.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. If you guys would stick around after me, I'd like to talk to you just a little bit more about this. Thank you. Next, we have life insurance policy.
Morning. Josh Jarvis, Human Resources. So, under our current volunteer term policy, we have the company we used, Mutual of Omaha. And right now, there's six other companies that are being deducted from employees' payroll internally. We've had some conversations with the auditor's office about it. Basically, whatever resource we offer to employees, those deductions can be made through our internal office. But anything that we do not offer, they need to pay for on their own. We have a list of names and other companies that they're using. We can send out information to them to let them know, hey, we do not offer, for example, Trustmark. We're gonna send this to you. This is who you're with. You need to pay for this on your own.
So the, the reason this is coming up now is we've been reviewing our benefits. And the county used to offer these policies to employees, but the county no longer offers them. So they're being payroll deducted through the auditor's office, even though the county doesn't offer these programs and these policies anymore. So this would be no different than somebody going and getting private insurance and then coming and saying, hey, can I run this through the payroll deduction at the auditor's office? The answer is no. So, like Liberty, I'll give you some examples. So these are policies, again, that the county used to offer, but no longer offers. Liberty National, there were two there. There was a pre-tax and a post-tax. Trustmark, Boston Mutual Life Insurance, Expert Plan Annuity Principal, and Boston Mutual Term Life Insurance. So their, so their quest, I believe, of the auditor's office and of HR is to approve these companies that used to be county-sponsored plans to notify anyone who's still using them and send them pay vouchers so they can start paying them directly and not run it through the county's payroll system.
That'd help take, relieve a lot of their work.
It would help relieve some, for sure.
I so move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Riggin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Uh, no. Next, we have the gym liability waiver.
This is at the request of the commissioners. We went ahead and put together a liability waiver for those that are gonna be participating in using the facility here and at the Justice Center. I think I sent that out. We made a few corrections based on some department head comments, but this is the final version that everyone is okay with.
So we have two of these, correct? One is for employee-only.
I believe we can use the same form for both.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, one, one copy we do have in our packet does say employee-only, but I think that's just for a discussion.
Yeah, there was a discussion point on whether it was going to be employee-only or whether minors at a certain age could join employees or not, so that was open for discussion.
And then to administer this, anybody using the exercise facility here at the county building would run through Human Resources. Anyone using the facility at the Justice Center would run through Chief Stanley's office.
But we still need to have all files on hand in the Human Resource Office. So if they go to another location other than here, they need to send that to the Human Resource Office so we can file it.
Right. Currently, there's, there's not a way to protect the county if somebody, one were to get injured in the gym. We wouldn't want it to turn out to be a liability for the county, so this is putting in place to protect the county.
You have an entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the waiver and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggin.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have Board of Sanitary Commissioners, Muncie Sanitary District Resolution Twenty-five dash fourteen.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. President. So twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen is a resolution number at the Muncie Sanitary District Board of Commissioners, and what you have is a copy in your packet. They've been talking with our folks at the highway department. The sanitary district has some equipment that's excess and surplus that may be of use to the, to the highway department. So you have an approved resolution from the Muncie Sanitary District Board of Commissioners to offer to the county a two-thousand-six Freightliner. This is a street sweeper with the brushes. This is one that would be used to clean the bridges. The street sweeper we have today isn't adequate for doing that. Just a vacuum, doesn't have the brushes, so you can get the gutters. This may need to be taken out of stormwater budget rather than out of the county highway if we decide to move forward. And the second piece of equipment, which came in very handy a year or so ago during the tornadoes through Selma that happened in April, the sanitary district came out with what they call Peterson truck. It has a large clam bucket, so they were picking up the, the debris and the trees and things and putting them away. And the highway department said, man, we have to get one of those. Well, here we are. The sanitary district has one. It's an O-two Peterson for fifteen thousand dollars. Has a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand miles on it. They just went through it and stuck some money in it. I think they maybe put more than fifteen thousand in it, but they're offering that piece of equipment to the county. So the first piece of equipment, that street sweeper, if you were to get a natural gas one, would be in the range of about four-hundred thousand dollars. And this is a twenty thousand dollar offer. And the Peterson truck would be in the range of about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, and they're offering it to us for fifteen thousand.
It is my opinion that the street sweeper should come out of stormwater, yes. And then the, this, this Peterson body truck should come out of Edit. That is my opinion.
I, I agree.
I win.
Edit.
Edit. Yeah, we have a line in there for capital.
Yeah, I'll second. Make a motion accept.
See, you wanna make a motion, and that would be a motion for the street sweeper to come out of stormwater and the two-thousand-two Peterson body truck come out of Edit.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
We have a second.
And we need to make sure that that first one gets on our next stormwater meeting agenda.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Riggin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
What we'll do, and what has to happen, is there'll have to be reciprocal resolutions accepting that. So there'll be one for the commissioners at the December first meeting for the, the truck. And there'll be one for the stormwater at the stormwater meeting on December first as well, accepting that. And then we'll send both of those, those that get signed, and send both of those to the sanitary district. Okay?
Perfect.
Very good. Thank you.
Jenna, will you update Mr. Conrad to the status? Tell him that we're still about a month away. Yeah.
Okay, contracts, agreements for approval. We have a contract, I'm sorry, the county bridge inspection contract.
This contract is just basically a continuation of what's already been happening. First contract was twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five. We're now looking at years twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-nine. With me today is a representative from Lock Mueller. If there's any further questions about specifics of the contract, and this is to inspect all of the county's bridges on a, by yearly basis, so.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Not for Mr. Thomas, if, if Lock Mueller could come up. So this is a result of RFP process that the commissioners put out, and we went through the scoring, and Lock Mueller was awarded. Can you just briefly give a quick, one-minute overview for the citizens on what this means?
Yeah, you bet. Yeah. First of all, I just wanna say, I'm, I'm Michael Vera with Lock Mueller Group. Professional engineer, civil structural. Just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this contract. So, like, like you mentioned, Commissioner Brand, this, this inspection, this is a continuation of the inspection program. This is a four-year contract, and this is inspection of all one-hundred-and-ninety-seven bridges that the county is responsible for. They are inspected. All one-hundred-and-ninety-seven bridges are inspected once every two years. And then there are some additional inspections that occur on the years in between. Some of those are for bridges that have a, have poor conditions. And then also, there's inspections that happen in between for bridges that you're doing rehabilitations and replacement of during that four-year contract. And then there also are some underwater inspections that occur during this period. And also, there's a group of structures that require a special inspection called a non-redundant steel tension member inspection or fracture critical inspection, and those, those bridges require inspections every two years.
And this is a requirement for all counties, and it's, to talk about that a little bit, so people-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes. And this, this, this work receives eighty percent federal funding, twenty percent locally funded. And this requirement is a nationwide requirement. Every bridge in the country that, and this, this is a group of bridges that are a span of twenty feet or more. Every bridge in the country is required to undergo these inspections, so all of the state bridges undergo these inspections. And then in Indiana, the counties are responsible for the bridges, and so then are therefore required to follow the same requirements. All qualified inspectors receive the same type of standardized training. It's also a nationwide requirement. And then the state also has their own requirements for experience that, that then they certify each of the inspectors to be a team leader or an inspection team member.
Thank you. So, so all one-hundred-and-ninety-seven bridges includes the ones inside the city limits. So the county's responsible for the bridges inside the city as well. And this is for six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. That, that's the amount we're talking about.
And I believe there was four different, did we, didn't we receive four?
We received four responses
Responses, I believe, yeah.
To the RFP we put out, and when we scored them using the standard scoring system, Lock Mueller had the best recommendation. And then as the ERC for the county, myself, and now the new ERC for the county, our county engineer Dean Thomas sat down and negotiated, and this is a result of negotiation that you have in front of you today.
I, I do have a request, and I don't always get my way, but I'm serving my twelfth year and a half. And in the past twelve and a half years, we've lost three timber bridges. So is there any way that you could start with the timber bridges on your evaluation? So we know what we're dealing with? Or do you already have your sequence made?
Well, so, so part of the requirement too, or part of the program is Delaware County's inspections are required to be conducted in October and November. And each of the inspections also are required to be, or each of the bridges are inspected, are required to be inspected no more than twenty-four months after the previous inspection. So we are sort of tied to the, the sequence of inspections that has occurred in the past. And so that we can make sure that all of your bridges get inspected on time and that you remain compliant with the requirements.
Yes, that's what was a little disappointing. One bridge had been inspected just a year before, and it failed, so.
But I, but I wanna, I wanna remind you also that there was at least one of those timber bridges had a piece of equipment that drove across it that should not have been driven across.
That happens.
That broke that bridge and cost us a lot of money, so.
John, did we start posting those weights on all the other thirty?
I believe that they were, the timber bridges were posted with a weight limit on it. I think that was done before Angie left.
That's true.
Thank you very much.
And as I understand it, just, since this is federal money, this would only qualify for inspection of the bridges that meet the federal requirements, which I think is what, nineteen feet?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, okay, twenty feet. The state of Indiana has a different definition for bridge, which are those that are smaller than that as well. And so I don't know that this would cover all those structures and culverts and whatnot, 'cause there's usually a separate inspection for those.
That's right, yeah. For, for small structures, which are less than twenty feet, there are separate inspections. The, those are not federally regulated in that you do not have to do them every two years. Some counties do. Some counties do them every five years, every ten years. It just depends on the county and, and what kind of program that they have set up. But there would be, these bridges, even if they're nineteen feet long, they look a lot like a bridge that's twenty feet long sometimes. And, and so, you know, they, they should be inspected on a similar interval. And they, there would be several, I'm sure, that are also of the similar types that you have for your twenty-foot span and larger, including timber bridges.
Yeah, I'd like to remind the commissioners and Mr. Brook and for your information, ECIRPD's working on a grant to do culvert and small structure inspections right now.
They are?
Thank you very much.
An entertaining motion of approval of this contract?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve this contract and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Riggin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have TrueRx Pharmacy Agreement.
It's me again, Josh Jarvis, Human Resources. So I'm a little uneducated on the TrueRx situation. This was obviously prior to me, but this is one of our pharmacy benefit partner, and I'm pretty sure it's through McGriff. I think we just need some improvement or just something with this. Sorry.
Yeah, this, this comes up every year. TrueRx is already, was already used by Apex, and this is to renew it through McGriff since we switched from Apex to McGriff. These are pharmacy benefit partners that help us manage and monitor the costs of our prescription. They recommend, you know, generics where applicable or guide you to a better cost. And I'll tell you, in my personal experience using TrueRx, I have a prescription that has to be filled, and through my insurance, it's very expensive, but when I get to the pharmacy, I ask them if they can run it on a discount card, and it's pennies on the dollar compared to running it through the insurance, so this is, this is a good program.
Looks like Josh is the only required signature on this.
He is. If we approve this, we would be authorizing Josh to sign this.
Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
A motion approved and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggin.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Josh. Next, we have the RPM Asset Evaluation Services.
Is part of the mental health, recovery, and addiction facility. When the commissioners enter into a long-term lease over three years, we have to also get an appraisal of the lease value for that facility. That has been underway, but Mr. Miller forgot to send this engagement over, and so he has just sent this over. So we just need to prove this. He's already working on that appraisal. Jay Allard is doing the other one for the county, so. Jay Allard is doing the other one for the county, so.
So this is statutory to get a fair market rent analysis to compare it to the contract that we had with Muncie OPCO LLC.
Any questions?
None for me. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Next, we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 2025-27, being an ordinance to amend the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Van Ice and I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor here at Muncie, 325 West Washington Street. The property that we are talking about today is currently a split zone parcel from farming and variety business or business variety. It is on the corner of 700 West and Highway 67. The property has been used over the years as, with businesses since 1970. And there is a home and there are barns, but the barns have been what they use as their business. We do have a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission that, from the November 6th meeting. And the reason we are doing this is to make it so the property can be futurely, if they want to divide it and/or sell it, they can market it as a variety business instead of being a split zone the way it is. It doesn't function properly. So we're trying to correct that.
So this is the intersection where KNS Recovery and WCI Equipment used to-
That's correct. And that's who we are working for.
Technically, this would be in, this was, went through the Planning Commission, correct? You got a favorable recommendation?
Yes.
This would be an adoption?
This should be a second reading for this particular. The first reading, on these kind of documents, the first reading is always done at the Planning Commission. And then it comes for approval for second reading to the commissioners.
So do we need to wait on 2025-27 and 28 until we get to ordinances for second reading?
We can go ahead. Is 2028, is it attached to 27?
No, it's, it's up off of Wheeling. It's on the corner of Riggin and Wheeling.
Okay, so let's, then let's do 2025-27 first.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-27 and a second. Roll call, please?
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now 2025-28.
Nick Tokar, Tokar Law 400, West Jackson Street, representing the petitioners and developer here. This is the northeast corner of Riggin and Wheeling Road. To the north, to the east, to the south are commercial zones and commercial uses. The request here is to zone this parcel from R2 to BV. I think it's highly unlikely to be developed at R2. There is a developer helping to develop it as variety business and should conserve property values. It's the most desirable use of the land and will aid in responsible development growth and should, should take a parcel that's generating relatively minimal taxes to a substantial taxpaying parcel for you.
This also had a unanimous recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Favorable?
Yes, favorable.
Are there any questions?
Only thing I kind of notice is bringing in a semi and turning around.
Yeah, they'll use those short semis like they deliver to, you know, grocery stores and convenience stores, things like that. Or a straight truck.
Or pumps. It's a nice-looking building.
Very nice.
I move we adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt this and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have an ordinance creating new fund for grant received by emergency management.
You've skipped one.
I did skip one, I'm sorry. Ordinance 2025-29, an ordinance for adjustment of payment period for the year 2026.
So in this current calendar year, we have 27 pays for the county. And next year in 2027, we'll go to 26 pays. So this is a necessary ordinance to approve the number of pay periods. Understanding that we had a meeting with the department heads and elected officials and everyone's in agreement to start in 2027 to go to a standard 24-pay cycle. And then this won't be necessary anymore in the future. And it saves work in the auditor's office to have to flip back and forth between pay period timing. So this is to approve going back to a 26-pay period for 2026.
Ed, do you have any comment?
No, he covered very well.
Okay.
I mostly approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for introduction. And a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Thank you. Next one for introduction is 2025-30, an ordinance creating new fund for grant received by emergency management for tornado siren purchase and installation. Director Cutino.
Morning, Commissioner John Cutino, Emergency Management Director. If you remember, a couple of months back, we were asked to apply for a grant through AEP to purchase, install, and put in place a tornado siren in the south end of the county around Oakville. We did apply for that and we were awarded the $50,000 for that grant. So we're looking for a fund line to be created to deposit that check that we received on November 5th.
Do you have a location for that yet?
Not yet. I'm going to take Bruce Dunn with me. We're going to go locate where we want to put it at. Commissioner Brand's been working on this as well, so we'll decide that and see what's going to be best for placement.
Very good.
Yeah, this started out as a request to the redevelopment commission from the township trustee, Leonard Reese. And AEP was paying attention and asked us to apply for this. So the actual tornado siren, even with installation, is $34,747. I appreciate Bruce Dunn getting that, which leaves some additional money for EMA to buy some additional equipment. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Motion to introduce.
A motion to introduce this ordinance and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Do we need to suspend the rules?
If you could, please, yes. We like to get the money, at least deposit so they can tie it off on their end, their bookkeeping records.
Commissioner, or Mr. Cutino asked to suspend the rules, so.
All right. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Entertaining motion for adoption?
So moved. Second.
A motion to adopt it and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
You need to have a motion to adopt now. You suspended the rules.
Thought we just did that.
Yeah, but did you adopt it too? I'm sorry. All right, I was, sorry.
It was very fast.
You guys are quick. I'm sorry. Good job.
Thank you, John. Don't blink.
Next, we have ordinance number 2025-31, an ordinance rescinding ordinances 2014-40A and 2013-003, identifying insurance for Delaware County retirees.
This ordinance is to be a point of discussion. We had some recommendations from Pierre that were sent over to get our ordinances in compliance with what the current terms are and to be consistent with what the changes coming for 2026 are going to be. And I know there was some discussion going back and forth. So this is an ordinance reflecting Pierre's recommendations. And then, of course, before adoption, we can make any needed changes that the commissioners so approve.
So this is for retiree benefits, of which I believe there are somewhere around 30-ish retirees, county retirees. And when this came up, I started doing some research from our neighboring counties and there's not a single county in our doughnut. So Henry, Randolph, Jay, Blackford, Grant, Madison County, nobody. None of those counties pay for retiree benefits. And currently, the county of Delaware pays 70% of the premium and the employee pays 30% of the premium. So just taking a deeper look at the cost to the county and potentially being consistent with our neighboring counties.
And it also amends the past ordinances, or it rescinds the past ordinances and amends to reflect that spouses and dependents are coming off as of January 1st.
Yeah, spouses are coming, right.
And we're talking about retiree insurance, correct?
This is retiree, yeah. The retiree themselves.
So we're, we've got 30 people currently on retiree insurance. And basically, what we're wanting to do is take them off of-
We're not looking to take them off. So by, I also looked into the state statute. So by statute, you have to offer it, but it doesn't say you have to pay for it. And we pay a pretty good amount of money for this stuff and other counties don't. So it's, it's, the Indiana code is 5-14-1.5 that says you have to offer it, but you don't have to pay for it.
And I think in this draft, it, it changes the 70-30 split to a 50-50 split, was the proposal.
Correct.
For next year?
For 2027, 2026.
What about 2027?
I don't think it spells it out in there. We had discussed phasing, phasing it out. So this would be a step in that direction.
Yeah, I could, I appreciate that, that we could give them some more.
I guess, this is where I'm at with all this. We're, in the beginning, we changed brokers and there was not going to be any change in the insurance. Now, we've changed brokers and now everybody's health insurance has increased. Now we're getting rid of retiree insurance. This, this wasn't how it was stated, is my problem with this whole thing. I understand we got to save money. I get that. But that's not what we said.
So I have a little different perspective. It's exactly what we said in the insurance committee meetings. It was unanimous in the insurance committee meetings, even with the past Human Resources Director, that we would raise the premiums. They hadn't been raised in 10 years. It was talked about ad nauseam. And it's exactly what we discussed. And this life insurance is a separate topic from, in switching from Apex to McGriff. It's a, it's a separate deal. And I don't know if I'm in favor or against it. I think we should discuss it.
Agree to disagree, but appreciate that. Commissioner Reagan, do you have any input?
Yeah, it is what you said. I'd like to slowly do it.
So Commissioner Henry, you're proposing just to leave everything as is?
So what is, give me a recommendation.
Number.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend going with the ordinance that's in front of us that moves from a 70-30 split to a 50-50 split for next year for retirees.
So you want to introduce ordinance 2025-031?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
No.
Okay. Motion denied.
Okay.
We'll move on to ordinance 2025-32, Vacating Public Rightway Located in Delaware County. So this is the-
32 is the 200 West.
Okay.
33 is the bridge on Wade Street.
Very good. What would you like to do with this ordinance? Is, I think we've had official, an official request to table this?
So is a method of tabling it to introduce it and then we don't have to adopt it? And we could leave it on the table until such time that they have us, you know, an auction. They're going to have a land auction. We don't know if one person or five people are going to buy it. And then if five people buy it, we have the option to remove it from the table and kill it.
That's always an option, yes, absolutely. You can introduce it and just sit there. There's no time requirement for the second, or you can just table it now before introduction. However you want to do it.
I'm afraid if we table it now, we won't hear other potential public input. I mean, the whole reason for introduction to just give that two-week period for other people to come forward and talk.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I would make a motion to introduce.
Second.
A motion to introduce this ordinance and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Then at your next meeting, what will happen is it will show up on the agenda as second reading and then you can make a motion to table it.
Correct.
And it will stay on the table.
Thank you.
Okay, for the Wade Street Bridge. Motion to introduce.
Second.
A motion to introduce this ordinance and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. All right, next we have a resolution, Resolution 2025-23A, an amended resolution to establish health insurance premium rates for employees of Delaware County.
So a couple of commissioner meetings ago, we adopted Resolution 2025-023, but it was for 26 pays. And after the meeting, it became, we all became aware that the auditor's office actually deducts healthcare premiums 24 times a year to be consistent with the billing from Apex, who we have now in McGriff in the future. So this is to amend that, to go from 26 pays to 24 pays. And that, that grid's on here. But there's an addition here, the Delta Dental rates and the vision rates are also on here. And I'd like to note that they're, that the employees' participation in those are still at $0. So the county pays for the dental and the county pays for the vision.
And that's a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve this resolution and a second roll call, please?
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Okay, we'll go to old business, dress code?
Just a quick update there. Had a lot of discussion about this and talking about our contractors and our tenants that visit the buildings as well. So I think that we need to add some language in there for contractors and tenants. That's the only update I have right now.
I talked to Josh about that too. Also want, we also want the employees to know. We want everyone to look professional. But we also want the employees to know that in the event we have a cold day or winter day, dress how you need to dress to stay warm in the event your vehicle breaks down on the way here. So dress, dress accordingly to the weather.
Agreed. We just need to make sure that we're upholding the standard of what the county needs to appear as. We do have multiple taxpayers coming in and out of the building all the time. We just want to make sure that we do look professional and ethical in our attire. That's what this is supporting essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have department heads, elected officials.
Good morning, Commissioners. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. We would like to present a claim, Rick, can you give me that? For you all to sign, if you don't mind. I know it's last minute. But 4 o'clock Friday, I got pulled into Rick's office, well, close to 4 o'clock, about the issue with Pitney Bowes being, needing to be paid. And so we thought at first we could do a transfer of funds, but we found out we cannot do a major transfer of funds due to that being need to be published. So Jan ran the, ran the numbers. Oh, I need the full, the full list. Jan ran the numbers and from September 1st until now, the total amount spent was $18,000 for all of Pitney Bowes that was ran through. That does not include certified mail, which is why I got drug into this. We have to have certified mail services for courts. So we are willing to do $25,000. I cannot say. The clerk is willing to do $25,000 out of Clerk Election Fund. We've sent the transfer over to Kita- We've sent the transfer over to Kida, asked her to put that in the postage line. So all we need from you is to sign the twenty five thousand dollar claim. And we are trying to get ahold of Pitney Bowes to ask if we can E F T the funds over to them to get this paid so we can get certified mail back up and running. So I just need your approval to sign the claims.
We appreciate you guys doing that. Rick called me, um, last week there one day and we discussed it. So I appreciate you guys finding the money for that.
Yeah, not only certified mail, we ran out of regular postage.
Yeah, all the postage is not running. So this would cover, it should cover everybody's postage through end of year of what we estimated.
We've never had this problem. Was it the budget just cut too much?
No, I, I think we have, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
If you go to the county council finance, uh, meetings, uh, this is discussed on a regular basis, transfers and appropriations. Um, but we do have to find a way to fix this problem with, uh, not enough postage.
And I will bring up, we also need to, uh, fix the list that, that Mike has because his list is outdated. It has the old building, it has, it has different, we need to fix it. Uh, the way he's running mail, it's not his fault. It just needs updated. So I don't know who wants to be in charge of fixing that list. Uh, like he has election room and voter's registration, which should be just now election room, I believe. So there's, there's mail being ran incorrectly that we have to then figure out, oh, these are both ours. Or I should say the clerk has to figure it all out. So I think that list needs to be updated while we're working on this whole postage, trying to figure things out. Um, and I know next year is gonna be a figuring out kind of thing because everybody put it in their budget. But hopefully this will get everybody through the end of the year and he had it in his budget because he didn't have election year.
So you're asking us to approve moving twenty five thousand dollars?
No, I'm just asking you to approve the claim. We already moved the money with Kida. It was a three hundred to three hundred series, so we didn't have to get approval for that.
Ed, will this work okay for you?
Yeah, I've, I've been working with him.
Yeah.
Rick goes on this, so.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve that claim.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve that claim and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, thank you very much.
Bring it up after.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials?
So, um, obviously I've been sending out a lot of emails with different policies and procedures and processes, uh, that, that we're trying to introduce and set in place. Um, we've, uh, have one that, uh, I think the handgun policy that I'm working with John and Danielle on. We're gonna have, uh, something sent out, a waiver form or some sort of documentation where if, if you have, um, the permit essentially, uh, to be able to, uh, carry a handgun, then we're gonna have a waiver for you to sign in an ordinance that goes with that. Supporting, uh, that you are, um, going to acknowledge the restrictions and the liability, uh, and everything that comes with that. And obviously the county will not be liable for it. Um, I, I, I'm sending out a, a lot of different policies and, and I understand that. And I, I just, I want you to know, we're not trying to reinvent the, the wheel here. Uh, we're, we're essentially doing something that should have been done, uh, out of respect, you know, years ago. We're just slowly implement, uh, implementing and introducing new policies. So we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. Just, uh, understand that, please.
Thank you. Hello, Jamie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Jamie Bane, Health Department Administrator, here to bring to your attention that we were awarded the Injury Prevention Grant that I presented to you last time, a couple of weeks ago. That one is for ten thousand dollars that will go towards swimming lessons and safety around water classes and, um, we end up settling on there.
Did you do firearm safety out of that too?
Not out of this.
Was that a different, that was a different grant?
Yeah, we were doing firearm safety. We had classes that were being designed by the sheriff and police under the Health First Indiana money. So with the budget cuts to that, that program has gotten kind of tabled until we can learn more about our future funding on that.
I understand.
Uh, but we, we did receive ten thousand dollars on the Injury Prevention Grant. I had previously submitted the grant documentation to the Commissioner's Office. It was incomplete. We didn't have C F D A numbers and those things from the state. Uh, I sent another email to them this morning requesting that information. According to them, no one else has asked for it, so the, the grantor was unaware, but she was gonna try to track that down for us. We were notified for your information. We were notified Wednesday afternoon that we would be awarded. We received the agreement on Friday afternoon requesting all the information for them to put together the contract by close of business Friday. I told them we didn't have that information, uh, the fund number and those things available. So, um, I don't know the legalities behind it, but if it's possible for the Commissioners to, uh, approve the creation of the fund and fund number, um, I can have that ordinance over to you guys for review and signature by the end of today. So that I can then have a fund number to provide to the state so that they can set up things on their end to get us this money.
John, would that be? Would we be able to do that?
We'd have to introduce, suspend the rules and, and adopt, right, if we wanted to do this.
I'm, I'm thinking, I can put together an ordinance pretty quickly here if you, if you want to take a five minute break. Uh, to create this fund or to add this to your, to your agenda today, if everybody agrees. Then you can suspend the rules and we can have an ordinance in place if that's what he's asking for.
Okay.
Seems fair.
If you guys don't mind, whipping that up real quick.
Can Kida get us that fund number?
So we need a fund number from the auditor's office to create?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't believe so.
Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I want to, uh, just quickly reiterate what Chief Stanley said at the beginning of the meeting, how much we appreciate what you guys have done for us in the past week. Throughout the course of the year, a lot of us get up here and we talk and we have conversations afterwards and business is business. But what happened last week, uh, with you guys, uh, coming out, that was, that was personal. So, uh, I want to tell you how much we appreciate that. Uh, I want to tell the community how much we appreciate, uh, the phone calls and the emails and the texts. Uh, the offers for support, uh, the donations for the family, uh, the prayers. So, um, it's, it's business, but it's, it certainly is personal. So, uh, I just want to thank you.
Sheriff, could we, and I'm not sure if you're willing to do this or not. I know there's, there's meetings and everything that has to take place. Do, do we want to, do we want to say anything about visitation or the funeral service yet at this point?
So, so that information is out. I think we actually have that on our Facebook post. It's all over the internet. So visitation, public visitation is on Friday from two to seven at Grace Baptist Church, uh, on Nebo Road in Yorktown. And then the actual funeral will be Saturday morning at ten AM at Delta High School. So, uh, we expect a huge crowd, obviously. So, uh, get there early, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other department heads or elected officials?
I've got one.
Go ahead, Ed.
So we submitted our, the ARF report to the Treasury, uh, by time this quarter. I'd like to, uh, request a meeting with the Commissioners and legal counsel to review like we have in the past, to give you an update where we already look at where the projects are. Make sure we're gonna meet our timelines for next year.
Absolutely.
So I'm thinking probably the first week of December because this week's pretty booked.
Yes.
For some of us and next week's Thanksgiving. So I'm thinking first week of December. So if you look at your calendars, uh, we'll try to set something up.
Is that an executive session or a public meeting?
It'd probably be administrative because you're administering the grant, the ARF grant.
And I will have, make or till it be a part of that, so.
Okay.
Any questions may have.
Okay, yeah, just organize it. Thank you. Don?
Yes, my name is Don Chambers, Superintendent of Delaware County. Just want to update the Commissioners and everyone on, uh, I've been looking on trying to reduce costs on, uh, the different materials. Like last Commissioners meeting, I let you inform you guys that I'll be saving eight thousand dollars a year on filters for just the gel only. I think that's a tremendous savings. And then now I just got some more information on the, uh, the bags of salt for the water softener. Uh, we were paying sixteen or seventeen sixty one a bag. Now we're gonna be paying six fifty nine a bag. Then also the salt pellets for the, uh, the gel and here, uh, we're paying twenty two forty nine a bag. We're gonna be paying nine ninety nine a bag. So to me, I think that adds up to a big substantial savings. Uh, I was also asked by Commissioner Brand to look at savings on paper and pens and stuff. I, I got the paper part, which to me, I, I spoke to Ed and Tanya and stuff about it. But, uh, because they're the ones that's responsible for the paper, but, uh, tracker, uh, not tracker supply, uh, staples. Right now it's forty six dollars a box for the same exact stuff we're getting now and they don't even charge a delivery fee. But now the place we get it from now is it's starting to charge a fifty dollar delivery fee on top of what we have. So, uh, it's just food for thought on that part. I mean, I know that's not my decision, but everything else is. But I just want to give you a heads up what I've been working on, so.
We appreciate it. Oh, your hard work, Don.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a list that, that couple of vendors, we've got samples of paper coming in, make sure it's with a carpet because we've had that issue in the past. Uh, so when we get those samples in, we'll make sure it works with, uh, the new top years we've got coming in. And assuming that it's proved, there are no issues, that looks like we probably saved money, uh, we'll just close those savings once we get the paper through.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other department heads or elected officials? All right, we have the payment of claims of twenty eight million, two hundred nine thousand, six hundred eighty dollars and sixty seven cents, of which twenty four point three millions advanced draw for fall taxes and, um, is it two point seven million, I think's lit? Do you have those notes down?
Two millions, two million, seven hundred eighty five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and seventeen cents for lit. And that's broken up into certified shares, public safety and edit.
Any other comments on those claims?
Uh, there were thirty seven thousand, five hundred fifty two dollars and eighteen cents in credit card fees on there. We did not get any, uh, invoices or justification for those. And there are a couple of credit card fees for lows that are buried in the claims. Uh, those need some descriptions as well.
I move away, Doc.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. We have the payment of ARC claims of four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve that and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, we have payment of payroll for eleven five of twenty twenty five in the amount of one million, eighteen thousand, five hundred thirty three dollars and sixty cents.
So move.
Uh, Paul's second. Can we confirm that amount? Okay, yep, it's good.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You got it right.
Okay, did we get, we had a motion to approve, right? A second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Um, do we have, uh, Josh or Don, could you make sure, could you see if anyone signed up out there? I don't think anyone had, but.
Public comment.
Yeah, there's no one on that sheet. Okay. We, we, yeah, we don't have any public comment. Um, Commissioner Brand, do you have anything you'd like to?
Why don't we take a five minute recess at this point?
You want to?
Yeah, let's do that. Because John just went to go get with Jamie and Tanya to work on that ordinance and we'll come back and make our comments and.
Okay, very good. We'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, is that a motion to recess?
Please.
Second.
We have a motion to recess and a second. We'll come back in, um, ten minutes. Roll call for recess.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
To the seventy-thirty as it currently is then?
The employee contributions, the employee county contributions. I mean, is, if there's a reason to restate it, that's fine. But if it's not changing, it's okay to clarify it.
We can, we can clarify it, yeah. So keep it at?
Seventy-thirty.
Seventy-thirty.
Okay.
With the provision of removing spouse. Okay?
Yep.
Are we clear now on that? Josh, are you clear? Okay. So that'll, that'll come up next meeting. Next, we have an ordinance.
I don't think Jen is back. Let's do our comments first.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So thank you, Mr. President. So just a reminder, I know Don sent this out, our building superintendent here in the county building. Automated logic will be here working for the next couple of weeks. You may see some irregularities in the temperature control specifically about the heating. Please bear with us. We're working on it as fast as we can. They're actually in the building working today. But it'll be about three weeks before we get that completed. Reminder that the weights and measures department is closed this week. Eric Strauss will be back in the office on Friday. He's attending a weights and measures annual conference on behalf of the county. Another cost savings that we talked about a while back was here in the county building. There is a significant amount of capacitance in the basement and we turned that off to hopefully see a cost savings. And I now have some, a little bit of recent history data that shows we're saving about 10% on our bill here at the county building. So a pretty significant amount of money just by turning off capacitance because there was no need for power factor correction here at the county building. Also, I was asked to remind everyone, we talked about this one time before, IT Jim Fluke and his team, they're working on changing our domain. It will no longer be at co.dellor.in.us. It'll be DelawareCounty.in.gov. And there will be more coming on that right after the first of the year. There was some confusion with endot. There is a proposed reduced conflict intersection being proposed at Highway Three South and Seven Hundred South. That is a fancy way of saying a J-turn or a Michigan left. And that meeting, that public input meeting is not until late January. So some people thought it was last week at Cowan High School. Then they thought it was going to be this week at Cowan High School. It's not going to be until January. And I can't remember the exact date, but I'll get it for you. It's either the 26th or the 28th of January and that will be held, I believe, at Cowan High School. But I'll, I'll get that. Also an improvement that we made for communications when we have ordinances and things for first reading, our communications department, Kyle Johnson, has created a place on the county's website where you can go look for proposed ordinances because they're not always available to the public before we have the meeting. So when you go to the website, you can check the box under document type section for proposed ordinances. And that will open up the proposed ordinance and Jen will be posting those. So another way we're improving communication for the public. Also for the county council. Thank you. That's exactly right. Any proposed things for the county council will also be posted there. And I'll save this for the next meeting. That's all my updates.
I do have an update before you. I received an email from Jim Fluke last evening and he's requested that I be the official contact for the county in reference to Microsoft and Dell computers. So he sent me all the, all the forms. He's already submitted their request to them. So I got to have that verified. So I'll go through that process.
What, what does that mean?
Well, evidently we had contract pricing with Microsoft and Dell.
Yep.
And he was the contact person previously. So essentially I'm going to be the contact for those, those two companies going forward.
Gotcha.
Whatever the orders office will be.
But nothing changes in the way we buy computers. Okay.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes. We're still collecting food items for second harvest. And here at the county building, we've had some success. And then out of the Justice Center, I did place a box in front of the clerk's office. So if anybody wants to drop off any donation this week, we'd appreciate it. And we'll be taking that next week probably to them. But also Josh is accepting checks. People want to send up to the HR. Appreciate it about helping us.
Yes, I'm accepting checks made out to Second Harvest Food Bank.
Thank you.
In the HR office.
Not to Josh Jarvis.
No. You can also, just so everybody knows, you can get online and actually donate right online. So.
And we have the flyers out there. Take the picture of that QR.
I was going to say, there's a QR code on all the flyers too. If you guys want to pay through that way as well, you don't have to do the checks. But if, if you do, it's made out to Second Harvest Food Bank. But I would encourage you to do the flyers and the QR code. Everything's pretty user-friendly.
Thank you. Okay, we have the ordinance creating a new fund for grant received by Delaware County Health Department for Public Safety Grant. It's ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-four. This is the ordinance that Director Bain spoke of earlier in the meeting. So I would entertain a motion for introduction of this ordinance.
So this is, I'll make a motion to introduce to create a line item for the grant in the sum of $10,000, I believe was the amount that Mr. Bain said.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
This is a, an ordinance actually to create the fund to put the money into so that Jamie can then draw it out of. It's an unappropriated fund since it's a grant from the state health department.
Okay.
Okay.
And you want the rules suspended, right? We want to move forward with this?
Yes, please. Thank you. Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. And now we need a motion to adopt this ordinance. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask everybody in the county to please pray for our sheriff's department this week. They got a very difficult week ahead of them. Layin' Corporal Reynolds to rest. Please pray for his family, his new wife. And I also want you to pray for the individuals from EMS that went out and, and did everything they could to try to, try to help Mr. Reynolds and, and remember the individuals at nine-one-one who dealt with this call also that are, that are struggling with this. So just, that's the final thought for today. Pray for those people. Entertain a motion of recess.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to recess and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yep.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. We're in recess.